For the week, so I'm helping to run the show for you guys.
And Emily Martin. So, and I'm Alex Whiteside. So, we're awaiting with anticipation Brian Furze's arrival, but we're going to start anyhow. We're going to defer past minutes. We're going to meet again on April 23rd, and then we'll probably meet during the first, right before the first session of town meeting. And then we'll meet again on May 14th. Subject, of course, to people pleading with us that meet at some other time. Citizens speak now. Citizens who want to speak can speak, but they're not going to be able to speak about their nursery, the various zoning articles, the Eustace Estate. Anything else they can't speak about?
Schulman Way.
Or Schulman Way. But if there's anyone who would like to speak about something else, feel free. All right.
Could we clarify, you can't speak on the condo article?
No, not now, because you've got to wait for the public hearing to start.
So those are all items that are on our agenda?
This is citizens speak, which is a different part of the agenda. We're going to get to the public hearings, and when the public hearings occur, the public gets to be heard. Are you a citizen who wants to speak about something?
I am indeed. Bobby Chupson from...
All right, well, you come up and introduce yourself, but don't speak about the zoning article.
I certainly will not.
Okay.
But I, it's been a tough winter, and frequently, I looked across the Fandry land, and I knew that the board made the right decision by vetoing the elongation of the downhill driveway. There was no question that you got it right. And when Ed dropped out, I noticed, you know, he'd had enough that night, and who could blame him? I felt badly, because I want to thank you people for doing what you do. It's, nobody's thanking you enough, and who can do what you do? I don't know. But you do get it right, and it's painful, and we all come in here and we suffer, but thank you. I really appreciate it, and you did the right thing, and so far, so good.
Okay.
Keep up the good work.
Keep talking, Bob. All right. That will do it for citizens speak. Now, we're going to do an A&R plan for Schulman Way, which is to add a small lot. And Ms. McHattick, why don't you tell us about it and ask if you're requesting any waivers?
Do you have a plan of that? Do you have a plan?
So, this was said, came in our pocket. There's a plan attached to it.
Okay, yeah, 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 got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Schulman.
So, the board has a large copy of an A&R plan that's been submitted for this evening. And the purpose of this plan is a very simple one. Marvin Gordon wants to convey a small additional parcel, which is called 29M2 on this A&R plan, to the temple. And the purpose of the conveyance is simply to correct the lot line so that it lines up with a stone wall. So if you look on the large plan, you should be able to see, or you may not be able to see it. I don't know what's actually, whether it's shown on this plan, but in any case, yes, it is, although it's, you'll see it better on your plan. There's a stone wall, and when this line is, when this parcel is conveyed to the temple, the property on one side of the stone wall will belong to Marvin Gordon. The property on the other side of the wall will belong to Congregation Beth Shalom. In order to do this, because we're creating a new parcel, I need to record an approval-not-required plan showing the new parcel and the remaining lot, which is a buildable lot, remains a buildable lot. And we did revise it several times. I believe it has all the notations on it that it should have.
Oh, you better go back. Take one of these chairs. Excuse me, Marion. Take one of those chairs. Take it back with you. Okay, continue. So you want to get an A&R plan. Do you need any waivers?
No.
Well, this is easy. Everyone understand this deal? So do we have a motion to? I guess we've got to. Is Bill coming back on Monday?
He'll be back on Thursday, but if all of you sign it, I think that counts.
Do we have a Mylar?
There's a Mylar underneath that, and there's a special mark.
Okay, well, this is, this is good. Okay, well, wait. Let's see if we can authorize ourselves to endorse this plan as not requiring subdivision approval.
I need that the planning board endorse this plan as not requiring subdivision approval.
Second.
Okay. Discussion, all in favor? Hi.
I have a question, though.
Yes, what's the question?
Marion, perhaps you or somebody else can tell me who Schulman was or is. Schulman, what does that mean?
It's a family name. Marvin's mother's family name. And one of the reasons that Marvin Gordon wanted to donate this land for this purpose was that he felt he, this was land that had come by way of his mother's family, and he felt that this is something that she would have wanted to do. It was a purpose that she would have wanted the land used for, and he thought that it would be appropriate to name the site Schulman Way for that reason.
People could just come around so we don't have to...
Beating to the punch, Al.
What? All right. Just hope the rest of the evening goes this easily.
All right.
Okay, we've got five minutes. Usually, we would, in this five minutes, have a report by the town planner. Maybe the assistant town planner can give us a report.
Yes. I have been up to certain things. I actually have a list of things that I've been up to, which still has me to prepare since I started at the end of December. I've been representing the town in the South Shore Home Consortium. That's the home program that HUD runs. We get a certain amount of money through a consortium that includes us, Quincy, Holbrook, Weymouth, and that's it. And we actually started a home rehabilitation program. So every year, we get a certain amount of money, and we're going to direct that money to certain low and moderate income homeowners that need help doing lead abatement, vital home renovations. So it's money that we get because we're part of this group, and we're doing some good stuff with it. I've been assisting the condo development working group, assisting the Affordable Housing Trust. I'm going to be working with the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee for choosing a site and doing an RFP for a new animal shelter. Mary McHattick is involved with that also. I've done, I've built a project database so that the town administrator can report to the selectmen on a weekly basis of the status of all the planning boards, various projects, trying to sort of make that a little bit more dynamic and possibly put it on the web so that our adoring public can have a better idea of what we've been up to. And I've attended various training sessions. The American Planning Association Massachusetts Chapter did a session on inclusionary zoning that I went to recently. I went to the Citizen Planners Training Collaborative Conference in Worcester a few weeks ago. So, and I feel like every week, getting more stuff piled on my plate, which is great. It's been good.
All right, this is excellent. Now...
There were two items under Schulman Way. I just want to remind you before you go on to the public hearing.
You have another item?
Yes, there's, there are some minor modifications of the Schulman Way, end of the Schulman Way roadway. That's why it says Schulman Way, comma, A&R. I think there's supposed to be two items here.
Okay.
And at the last planning board meeting, we gave you plans showing how the end of the roadway would, within the existing roadway on the plan, is now going to turn left instead of having a larger area of pavement as a turnaround.
That'll be circle.
So you did see those plans already. I submitted, you had large versions of them, but you needed to have me come back and take a vote on approving that as a minor modification or whatever you want to call it. So, do you need that information? I mean...
Well, we've seen the plan, and...
We have a small one here.
And the minor modification is to, we're going to retain the circle, but we're not, it doesn't have to be built out at this time. It can be just an extension of the roadway. And as, that's a minor modification. And so shall we approve it?
I have a suggested vote in my memo. I can read it to you if you would like to see if that's what you might want to vote. It's similar to what you just said.
Why don't you read it and then pass it along?
Okay. Move to approve the following de minimis change in the roadway designed for Schulman Way subdivision. Eliminate the turning area at the end of the roadway, and instead allow the roadway to turn towards the parking areas, all within the approved roadway layout on the Schulman Way subdivision plan dated March 17th, 2014, and revised on April 23rd, 2014, and recorded at the Norfolk Registry and Plan Book 632, page 1, on July 1st, 2014. And then I refer to the three plans that are provided. You can put that in the vote or not. I'm sorry, I didn't, I should have brought...
Okay, why don't you keep that? Okay, we have a motion. And Marion has been good enough to read it to us. Any, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a discussion? No. Okay, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
All right. Do we have to sign that, Kim? No.
They're not going to be recorded.
Okay, fine. We voted it, it'll go in the minute.
The Mylar we just signed was the new configuration of the driveway?
No, what you just signed was a separate issue, actually.
Oh, I realize that's the addition of the parcel.
It's just the A&R plan that needs to be signed because I have to record an A&R plan in order to convey this piece of property. So on this, because it's a minor modification, and it's the same plan that you already have, what we discussed last time was that you would approve it at a meeting, but I would not record a new plan.
Okay.
Keeping that basically the...
This is perfect. Now, before we start, before we start the Eustace hearing, we're going to move all the extra chairs, except for those three, into the audience and see if we can get some of the people to sit in them. Ms. Bryant. That would be... We're having a city road hearing with respect to the Eustace property. And it's somewhere on Canton Avenue, but this doesn't have the number.
Yes, 1424, 1426 Canton Avenue.
Okay. Now, Mr. Sheffield, we are being televised and recorded, so be careful.
I'm Attorney Bob Sheffield, and I'm very, very pleased to represent Historic New England, who acquired the Eustace Estate, and it also owns and manages 36 other historic properties in the New England area. With me tonight is Diane Viera, who is the Executive Vice President and Chief Operating Officer of Historic New England. I also have Ben Havlek, who is Preservation Specialist for Historic New England. I have Enzo Scolara, Principal of VSL Consulting, and Skip Burke from Richard Burke Associates, the landscape architects. And I will ask Skip to indicate why, what will be necessary to be done with the driveway entrance. However, I'm looking for our tree warden to join you as this is a combined hearing of the planning board and the tree warden. Branch?
All right.
Get up here on television.
Now, we've got, now, we've got to give you a chair. Take one of those. Take, no, take one of those back there.
I would like, if possible, for you to perform your part of the hearing first before we do my part.
Okay, maybe you should come up here and sit at the head. Since this is, after all, your hearing.
Good to see you.
Yeah.
And why don't you introduce yourself, Branch?
My name is Branch Lane, and I'm your town's tree warden.
And this is a joint hearing between you and the planning board and the Eustace Estate.
Right. And I submitted materials for the board to consider, and on the advice of Mr. Lane, I submitted stamped drawings this afternoon so that there can be no question about the legitimacy of the, of the documents. But I would like to say that the present driveway entrance is through the gatehouse that everybody is familiar with, going up Canton Avenue. However, in order to convert the Eustace mansion to a museum, it would be necessary to have a new driveway to improve emergency access, to improve sightlines on going in and coming out, to provide a safe two-way traffic, which the gatehouse can handle, and finally, to preserve the physical integrity of the gatehouse. And the, I will pass it now on to Skip Burke, who will be able to tell you exactly what we're planning to do, why we're planning to do it, and I hope that it garnishes your support. Thank you.
Thank you. What's the best way to orient this?
I was going to say, if you have a, I'm not sure that anybody can see it back there.
Just put it, put it sideways.
Or you could bring it up here as well, and grab a mic while you're at it so we can make sure that everybody can hear you on television as well.
You're like a rock star. If you can come right into the center of the room.
So as Bob mentioned, this is the carriage house here, Canton Avenue to the left here. And as the name implies, when this was built a century and a half ago, it was built for horses and carriages. And especially the pass-through here is dimensioned for horses and carriages. And so at its narrowest here, it's about 12 and a half or 13 feet. And the challenge we've had for this new contemporary use is that we have to accommodate fire engines and especially school buses here. And if they could fit through, which is a very close dimensional tolerance, they'd never be able to make the turn and the radius in order to straighten out and get right through there. So we've been opposed with the challenge of finding a new public entrance here. And Bob mentioned some of the criteria. The first is safety with sightlines that are safe. The second would be two lanes, as Bob mentioned, where we have historically just, just one here so we can have both coming and going traffic, but also have the turning of a larger vehicle or bus. Also, this is for Historic New England, who are in the business of conserving buildings and landscapes. So we want to do it with as light a hand as possible, with as little disturbance to the landscape as possible. Also, we'd like to be able to have a new entrance associated with the carriage house, since that's the historic entry to the property, very iconic. And so we'd like to have the new entrance as close to this so it's not confusing as, as it might be. But also so you get a similar experience to what you had historically. And lastly, if you've ever been on foot around here, the alignment of this portal points right to the main house. So it's really a very interesting sort of poetic relationship between this, as you'd enter and look at the main house and then turn away and, and enter in a more circuitous drive. And so we wanted to also offer that opportunity to come off of Canton Avenue and have that first glimpse of the main house before you continue. So those are all, all the criteria. And this proposed entrance over here, just to the south of the carriage house, actually complies with all of those. The sightlines are very similar to what they are here, both north and south. We have the, the two lanes here. It's almost no grading in this area at all. This is all on pretty much the same level, as is not the case up here where it's a couple of feet, maybe three feet higher here. And we're directly associated with the carriage house, and we have that view I mentioned. And so we feel very comfortable with this as a entry proposal. In realizing this, there's approximately 62 or so feet of stone wall we'd have to take down that goes across this area right now. And we'd take about 12 feet of that. And when I say stone wall, most of the stones are single stones. There are a couple that are stacked, one on top of another. But mostly, they're, they're single stones that march along here. But we would reuse approximately 12 linear feet of that 62 in creating a new radius here, like they have with the historic radius that turn into the existing entry. The other 50 feet, we would stockpile on site to use in other situations as needed. But all that wall is just inside private property here. And also, there are three trees that we've looked at that are over four-inch caliper in this area, also on, on private property. But they would have to be taken out to allow the, the radius here as well. And I think with that, that's it.
Can I get to take questions? Does the board have questions? Do the people in the audience have questions? Yes.
Another question, so much as a comment, if I may.
Come on up and introduce yourself, Steve.
Steve O'Donnell, Chairman of the Historical Commission. And the Historical Commission has met with Historic New England, and we've discussed this, and we are fully in support of the application before you. We never like to see historic walls taken down. But interestingly enough, most of the time when we're asked to rule on it, it's to create an access to a new buildable lot. This is exactly the opposite. There's a request here to take out a piece of wall in order to preserve property. Not only preserve the gatehouse, but also assist in the preservation of the mansion, and also the large acreage and open landscape. As was just pointed out also, this is not what we think about when we think a typical New England stone wall, where multiple stones are upon stones and a thickness in order to make the wall work. These are mostly large, single stones, which have been lined up in a linear fashion along Canton Avenue. So, yes, it's a historic wall on a historic road, but taking the wall out is going to do more to preserve the historical aspects than anything else. So we are fully in support and hope that we will have your support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can someone please describe what will be in the museum?
What will be in the museum?
Yeah.
I would be happy to do that. Shall I come forward?
Yes, introduce yourself and speak into the microphone, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Diane Viera, and I'm the Chief Operating Officer at Historic New England. As Mr. Sheffield said, Historic New England owns and operates 36 historic sites all across New England. We're delighted that the Eustace Estate will become our 37th. It's really an amazing property. If you haven't been there, we welcome the entire community to come when we're able to open it to the public. It will be a house museum, meaning that we will have guided tours of the building itself. We will also be preserving the landscape. The physical landscape of this property is amazing. It will definitely be a part of, of the program. This will include public tours. It will include school programs. We do run public events at our sites. They include family events, concerts. We run lectures, that type of thing. The very interesting thing that the Eustace Estate has that some of our smaller properties do not, our smaller buildings do not, is a series of bedrooms or bed chambers on the second floor that we're going to be able to use as a small exhibitions gallery. So this will allow us to do some changing exhibitions in that space, which is not what people typically think of as a house museum, which remains pretty static. Our plan is for our first exhibition that opens there to be on jewelry. So we're looking forward to being able to share some of Historic New England's collections of New England material culture there as well.
What's the acreage, please?
It's about 80 acres.
Eight?
Eighty.
Eighty? Is all, is all one lot?
There are four parcels. There are four parcels.
Are they all going to be conveyed to, to this?
Yes, we've purchased them all.
The 80 acres?
Yes.
Nice.
That's right up to the Blue Hills, which, of course, is 17,000 acres.
Some of it is in agriculture restrictions already. And for those of you who know of Brookwood Community Farm, which is another local nonprofit, they began actually growing on the farm when Mr. and Mrs. Eustace still owned the property. And we've continued that relationship with them. So we're, it's a very compatible use to the museum. So we're happy to have them with us.
Well, yeah. Just a quick question. Sorry I'm late. The driveway that's currently existing, is that, will it be used for any purpose going forward?
We won't be permanently blocking it, as in something that can't be moved, but we see it very, very rarely being used. We're going to have some type of a barrier there so that people can't go through the archway.
Yeah, I mean, the gate that's shown is, I'm not sure,
Yeah, I mean, the gate that's shown is, I'm not sure, maybe it's not a great representation.
It is not a great.
It just seems to not be a very attractive gate.
It is not the gate that will be there, I assure you. We had a discussion about that recently after these drawings were submitted.
Thank you.
Yes?
I just have a brief comment in support as well. Denny Swinson, in this situation, I'm representing Friends of Blue Hills, but we wanted to support it for all the reasons that Steve gave, especially the open space and the incredible contribution and gift this is to Milton. Thank you.
All right, any further comments?
I have a quick question as a citizen. Looking at the plan, the elevational changes are relatively slight coming down off the estate into the new driveway exit. There's a house across the street, and I'm wondering for evening activity over there, where those headlights go, because that looks like a relatively straight shot to me.
Yeah, I think that, you know, they will go across the property there, but, you know, our thought is that we don't have, you know, so many guests, you know, that it's just stacked up in a kind of unrelenting kind of condition there, so hopefully it's.
I would add that directly across the proposed driveway entrance, there are some twelve-foot-high trees, so that it, that house across the street won't take the brunt of it. There will be some light, no question about it, but the light will be down towards the end of the house that doesn't have the windows, that is where the houses were.
Okay.
So that it, we took that into consideration, and it's not going to eliminate any all light, but it was factored in the locating of the driveway.
Okay, and I had one comment about the trees that are going to be removed. The developer has assured me that there was a survey down in the field there, and that survey showed that these trees are in fact on your private property.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct. The trees are behind the wall, and the wall is actually on private property too, so they're layered back.
Right, but somebody did go out there in the field and did?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, civil engineer right here.
Because I didn't, I spoke with Bob earlier, I did not have a signed plan for this.
You do.
There are signed plans available.
Yes.
Those are my two questions.
On the stone wall, on the larger part of the gatehouse, you have a stone wall coming up, coming into a radius into the current driveway, and then you have a gap, the stone wall beginning, a curve, and then going forward, and that's where you're going to break in. Did you consider taking the stone that you will be removing, starting a radius on the other side of the current driveway, continuing it along the shorter part of the gatehouse, and then creating a radius along the new driveway, so that you, as you go into the new driveway?
You had a lot to write.
Exactly.
Yeah, you know, we did think about that. It wouldn't be original to the property.
True.
That's probably our biggest concern.
Okay.
And secondarily, I was concerned that it would just look like a fragment of a wall, where the other walls, left and right, are very, you know, they're long, they're continuous.
Just wanted to know if you considered that or not. Thank you.
Any other, any other comments on this?
Just wondering.
Yes.
You have to come up and speak into the microphone.
I'm going to tap back here behind a crutch, so I can speak up.
Pass this microphone over, maybe?
Yeah, I can pass it, sorry. Okay, if you can pass it back.
I'm Robert Muzzi from Hillside Street. I am familiar with Historic New England, because I worked there as staff for about ten years. It's twenty-five years ago now, so it's in the distant past, but I speak unsolicited tonight to say that this is an outstanding organization that we've, that has joined our town. And I can say that it's the oldest preservation organization in the United States, and their standards are considered to be among the highest in the country. In fact, they are ridiculously high sometimes. The standard they meet takes months and years sometimes for them to argue among themselves, but that's good. That's good. So I think we should all be comfortable that the rigorous process they've gone through to arrive at their approaches here is, will serve the town well.
All right, I think that that sums it up pretty well.
Did we look at the flow of water coming down the driveway, crossing the street? Yeah, the property across the street. It looks like there's a catch base in there, I was wondering.
Hi, I'm Steve Garvin, I'm a professional engineer from Sami Odis Consultants, and we have considered and put in a curb system to allow for it to be captured on the side, as opposed to trench drain. We do find a catch base in a twenty-four inch grate will do better than a trench drain, sometimes hydraulically jumping it. We have also filed with conservation, where that is in a buffer zone, and have illustrated drainage-wise how it works, and has improved.
All right, I think that unless someone else has a comment, we could entertain a motion to approve this scenic road application. Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second, and should we have a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So we have approved it in the manner of which you've applied, and Tim will send out a letter.
Thank you.
To memorialize that.
Thank you.
We look forward to visiting you.
Thank you, we look forward to having you.
Now, we're going to have a hearing on some proposed zoning, and because the proposed zoning concerns some land near me, and if enacted, would probably affect the value of my property, I am going to leave the room, and Mrs. Ennis will conduct the hearing.
So we are opening a continued hearing on an article that is in front of town meeting for this May's annual town meeting. And the planning board had, in its previous discussions, this is Article forty-eight, condominium planned unit development, in its previous discussions had felt that the article that's being presented to town meeting in the warrant is not an article that we can support as it is written, and we were prepared to request that it be returned to the planning board for further study and to be brought to town meeting again in October. At our last meeting during the hearing on this, Marion McCadrick brought forward a possible amendment to that meeting, and we had requested that the condominium committee that's looking at the possibility of a condominium bylaw that would look at the entire town, review this. Brian Furze is the co-chair of the condominium committee, and bring their comments back to us. And since then, we have received rather a lot of pieces of paper, which include a revision that Marion is bringing forward on behalf of her client, a revision from residents who have proposed their own revisions of this article. We've got the comments from the condominium committee, and comments from individual members of the condominium committee. So what we're going to do tonight is I'm going to have each group briefly state where they are, and talk about their different proposals and the comments. We're going to hear from the public, and then we're going to decide where we want to go from here, if this is something that we can close today, or if in fact we want to continue it to our next meeting in April. So since Marion McCadrick presented hers first, I'm going to this time let the residents come forward first, and then I'm going to ask Marion to present her responses to those, and then Brian, ask you to respond as to what the condominium committee has said, and then we'll ask for public comments. So that's where we are at the moment. Is there somebody from the residents group who's been involved in preparing the amendment who wishes to present it? Yes?
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
How do you define residents group?
Well, there's a group of people who came together to present a specific amendment. So I'm assuming there is one or more representative from that group who would speak to that amendment. There may be multiple residents here, but I'm assuming, I don't have an official name for that group, so I'm assuming there's somebody who can speak to that article. But we are looking forward to hearing from everybody who wishes to speak tonight, so. So I see movement.
Someone wants to speak first.
Did you, were you part of writing the amendment?
Yes, I'm on the condo committee, so I might be the best person to give overview. I know some other people who may be here as well.
Okay, so let me just pull this up because.
Can I just speak for just a moment?
Yeah, absolutely.
There was some confusion at the condo committee, so I want to just clarify a few points.
Yes, please do.
And I think you probably just did that, but I just want to say it again. So what is in front of the planning board currently is the original citizens article that is printed on the warrant.
Yes.
That the planning board has voiced some concern with, but not taken an official vote on at this time.
Yes.
The two documents in front of us, one which is labeled as Article forty-eight, condominium planned unit development, and the other which is labeled as planned unit condominium development, residents version three thirty-one fifteen. These are not, and it was characterized this way by me, so I want, that's one of the reasons I want to clarify it. These are not amended, proposed amendments. These are actually, these are basically language that would be potentially submitted at the town meeting as friendly amendments or alternative amendments, alternative language, which the planning board and the warrant committee are being asked to consider.
Yes.
Recommending in place of the other language, but they're not being looked at as amended versions.
Well, they're not being looked at, I mean, we are not proposing them as amended versions. They are proposing them as amended versions.
Correct. They are proposing them as amended versions.
Yes.
We are not reviewing them as amended versions. We are reviewing them, I guess, for potentially considering as one of these as our recommended replacement for that language, incorporating language from both into a replacement language, not doing anything. So that, I just wanted to clarify that, because it was a confusing point at the condo association meeting.
More or less a question, this residents version, it would be an amendment to Article forty-eight?
That would be, so we could, when we get to the floor of town meeting, there could be a number of possibilities. Possibility number one is that Mrs. McCadrick presents the amendment that she gave us at the last meeting.
She amends Article forty-eight.
Which would be a friendly amendment to Article forty-eight, and she has asked the moderator to rule whether or not it's within the scope of the original article, which he did, and has ruled that it is within the scope of the original article. So that's one potential friendly amendment, yes.
Just a clarification, sorry, this all came up. The moderator has not ruled, because he rules on town meeting floor.
He has indicated that he might be.
He's indicated that he will rule, but town council has suggested that, or has ruled, or has given us the opinion that it is within the scope of the original article.
So that's one.
You just, and this again is not now a question, this is now a comment.
Yes.
It seems to me that the extent of the language, in considering an amendment, it almost seems to me to be a replacement.
Well, that was my concern as well, and the, the question will be on town meeting floor, if the moderator says yes, if he says, and as Brian points out, town council has apparently said that he thinks it is within the scope, because it is more limiting than the original article. If he says, yes, this is within the scope, we can debate this, then the planning board needs to be able to have a recommendation, one way or the other, to give to town meeting. Here's where it gets a little bit more complex, in that there is this residents version three thirty-one fifteen that may also be offered up as a friendly amendment on town floor, which would mean we would have two competing, potentially friendly amendments.
And again, the amendments, it almost seems unfair to town meeting members to say, here's an article, and here's an amendment that you'd really have to spend some time with, because we're not asking you to change two words in paragraph nineteen, we're asking you to.
Well.
And it was not printed with the warrant.
It was not printed with the warrant, and my expectation would be that both of these, if the various proponents go forward, both of these would probably be provided, in fact, I would strongly suggest that they be provided to town meeting members certainly the first night of town meeting, because this is further along in the warrant, and preferably before that. But as Brian alluded to, there could always be a third possibility of some sort of joint friendly amendment offered, assuming that, because these, the residents version and the other version are in some ways very different at the moment.
So it becomes one.
So there is always that possibility, which in that way, that case, we would be back down to one amendment rather than two. Whether or not the planning board chooses to support any of them, or recommend that they all come back, is a matter for us to discuss now. And it may be that depending on how things move, we may be making this discussion and decision right up to the point of town meeting, which can happen if things are in a state of still being discussed and decided on. So part of what we're doing tonight is finding out what's involved, what are the differences, what comments have come up in the review of these documents, and what comments we would have, and then seeing what the next steps are.
Just again, a very brief comment.
Yes.
This is a process, like you said, that we may go through from now until the very start of town meeting.
Yes.
Again, it seems unfair to expect the town meeting members to, you know, see a printed article and then say, well, we want to, not, it seems almost wrong language, but I know it is the proper language, an amendment. It seems again, more of a complete replacement.
It is significantly, certainly, both of them are significantly different from the original citizens article, yes, and I would expect town meeting members to comment on that when we get to town meeting, so. So for the, yes, and thank you for clarifying, it's helpful to know what was found confusing. For the residents version three thirty-one fifteen, are you one of the writers of that?
Yes.
Okay, in that case, please introduce yourself for the cameras.
Yeah, I'll introduce myself first. Eric Schalowicz, from one thirty-two Ford Ranch Road.
Okay.
I am a butter to the parcel that is the focus of this zoning bylaw. I am a member on the condo committee as the representative of the Hillside Neighborhood Association. I am a director of Scotts Woods Protection Fund, which was an organization established by the neighborhood to ensure that whatever development was reached for this site was appropriate to the neighborhood and done responsibly. And I think that about covers the scope of it.
Okay.
Before I get started, one thing I did want to ask the board is, my understanding was, and it didn't come through me, but I understand that a request to delay this was made either through the planner's office or someone, because there hasn't been dialogue, enough continuing dialogue among the neighbors themselves and between the developer and the neighborhood. I'm happy to go through the discussion, I know neighbors are here to speak with their own thoughts, but I know that there's another meeting down the road, so my question is, have you received that request to extend this discussion?
Yes.
And how should we proceed?
Yes, so we have received a request to extend the discussion. There's two ways we can do it. We can go ahead and continue it now, but there are a lot of people who are here wanting to speak, and not all of them may be part of your group. I thought what might be best, especially for town meeting members who may be listening in, is stating what some of the issues are, then continuing this to our next meeting after giving people an opportunity to speak. But I am open to suggestions, if the majority of people feel that they just want to have it continued and move on, then we can talk about that, so. This is fairly flexible. Brian, you had a comment?
Before we continue it, I definitely want to hear from the neighbors who are here, so that's just, I'm just putting that on the table now, is my opinion. Having said that, I think I'd be interested to hear before we go through both of these documents, which are somewhat lengthy, I'd prefer to hear Ms. McCadrick weigh in on, if the neighborhood and the developer, which I'm seeing, I'm sort of getting the impression of may be having further dialogues and coming back to us with another version.
Oh, I was not intending that we're going through this.
I wasn't shaking my head that way, no, no, no.
Okay.
I thought, there hasn't been discussion amongst these, so I do not know if there's, if we're not close at all, to your point, it's, there is no agreed amendment that would be the friendly amendment. And again, to your point, Brian, these are not amendments that are. And again, to your point, Brian, these are not amendments that are before the board in the first place.
Understood, okay.
Yeah, and we're not, I just want to stress, because you can see I have a lot of paper here. We are not going through this point by point tonight. This is more of what's the status of the various different conversations that are happening, yes.
Great, thank you.
Can I step back, because I, people here, I don't know, there might be a general opinion to continue it.
I don't think we're going to continue it, at least from my perspective, I want to hear all the neighborhoods at lea...
Well, we'll still, I mean, we can hear from as many people who want to talk tonight, but we're going to continue this to our next meeting as a discussion.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
But if we want to hear, I would be interested in hearing the status from both sides, so...
Okay, yeah, definitely.
So before we do that, I think we would like to hear the status before you step back.
Okay.
All right, so your status is that, what's your status? Where are you guys?
Well, I'm willing to go through the differences between the version that was proposed on behalf of, a question was raised, you know, who are the residents behind this proposal? And one thing I will say is, there's not unanimous consent in the whole Hillside Neighborhood Association. I'm certain some people are going to stand up tonight and say they don't agree with this at all. At least that's my impression from some discussions. I will say this was designed after discussion with a few of the butters, the main butters on the site, and the majority of butters to this site support this plan. And I know there's some other, some of the meetings that have been had by the neighborhood, there is general consensus for this, but it's, I will say, because I know they came up before, this is not an officially approved Hillside Neighborhood Association amendment. Would you like me to go through very quickly some of the high points on the differences? I mean, you also have all the documents, so if you want to read them.
I'd say you've already hit the top three points.
Okay.
And then...
Top three points, one for the neighborhood, the density is still very much. The site was originally, the developer sought to build three homes, which was denied by this board for various reasons. We've been threatened with a 40B development of 77 units or a church. The most recent amendment is for, I'll say 53 units, again, not 45, and that's in some of the materials that were provided, because the developer actually owns 15 acres of land, not 12 on this site. And we feel that, I feel that 24 units, 22 of market rate, and two of affordable, could be designed in a way that minimizes the impact on the site. Another major concern was the setbacks. The developer version had setbacks from existing streets and from residences, but due to the shape of the slot and that it's in between two roads, and then most of the frontage isn't on a road, our version is setback from the property line. I guess, a third, although it wasn't increased substantially in our version, was the open space requirement, which in the developer's version was proposed for 30% of the site. We proposed 40% of open space. It could be higher, but also the way that the roadway was laying, the driveway was laid out for the development, it also maintained some of that open space, and combined with the 90-foot buffers, would substantially insulate the development towards the middle of the site.
And so your next steps are to meet with the neighbors again, to meet with the developer, to just see where the conversations are going? Do you have a, are you trying to come to something that you can all come to agreement on?
Yes. And one thing I do want to make very clear is, I would not support this amendment for the sake of an amendment. If the developer doesn't support this plan, I would ask that the planning board not recommend it. We don't want this to be a backstop where this gets approved and great, but it's not going to get built, and then discussions continue, you know, to use this as leverage for another deal. I can also say, you know, we're still agreeing among the neighborhood, but if it comes down to, not interested now, maybe interested in six months, I don't know that the same density is going to be on the table. I mean, the neighborhood's been on the defensive side for a long time at this point, first with the 40B indication, and then most recently with the church. So, you know, I would personally very much like to see the site developed responsibly, moved into this neighborhood, not expecting to be in the middle of a fight for a number of years. So if that can be done, I'd love to see it.
Sounds good. So thank you, Brian.
So before you leave, I don't think he answered the question, just what the next step is. So are you meeting with, and you don't have to disclose this, I suppose, but are you meeting with the developer? Do you have neighborhood meetings set up? What's the timeline? Because all of that's going to be very relevant. We're at April 9th right now, town meeting is, I think, May 9th.
Earlier than that.
Earlier than that.
First Monday, 7th?
May 7th.
Yeah.
So we'll probably be talking about this on May 9th. So, I mean, I think we're clearly running out of time. So I guess we're just kind of, we're trying to figure out where to go here.
And I'm here to take notes as well from Marion's response.
Thank you.
We have not met with the developer. I know there's been some very brief dialogue between the developer and John Lawton, who's the, another neighbor that's very active, actively involved. So I'm interested to see what Marion Ennis' proposal, and also there needs to be more of a dialogue within the neighborhood, and there's, I think the formal HNA meeting is scheduled for next week.
All right.
Thank you.
So that's helpful from a timeline perspective. And now you know our timeline as well, obviously, as we're all moving towards town meeting. Thank you very much. I'm going to have Marion come up and speak to what she understands the status to be, and then I'm going to welcome comments from people who are sitting back there waiting to speak, because I can see a couple of you. And Marion, of course, introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Marion McCadrick. And I represent the owner, John Fandry, of a site off Hillside Street, and a developer he's been working with, Todd Hamilton, who owns property on Harland Street, lives on Harland Street. And it's important to emphasize that there is an owner and a developer involved here. So any proposal that gets made, any zoning that gets written, is not only a question of what Mr. Hamilton might think, but it's whether the owner is interested in developing the property this way. And the owner lives in Belmont, has never lived in Milton, purchased the property, you know, a long time ago. It's been held as an investment in the family. He's interested in return. So that's what we're dealing with here. I don't have a lot, you know, I, that was a good summary of the differences, the fundamental differences. And there are some good rewordings, and I think I noted them in my memo to the planning board. I thought there were some good things, of course, in the thought that the residents group has put into a redrafted amendment. But there's a huge difference between the two versions, and it's basically a density difference. Because the residents' density proposal is for about 22 units with affordable units, 20 without. The developers' and owners' proposal was intended to be for 44 units, was written to allow 44 units, and I believe that the developer and the owner would agree to a restriction of 44 units. They were talking about as a development site, their, one of their two parcels. One parcel's a large parcel, the other parcel's an A&R lot that has 92,000 square feet. They were not including the A&R lot, not intending to include it as this development site. Nevertheless, they do own that other property, and it's understandable that everybody would be looking at that and wanting to know what's going to happen to it. But the basic density they were interested in was 44 units, which allows them to finance four affordable units. So sort of a base density of 40, but because you want to have affordable units and the 10% rate, 44 was proposed. That represented a value for the land, and that's a value that the owner is trying to achieve. We may find that there's another way to achieve a comparable or good result that's still good for the town. But the other options that have been proposed have been a 40B, or there is a church that has made an offer on the property for a good value. So we have an owner who has an offer on the table that's good till June. He's interested in it. We've had this 40B floating around for a long time, even before the open space development was proposed. A 40B development was an option the owner was looking at. That 40B development would have to be denser, because you'd have to bring sewer into this property. And it's sort of a, you know, combination, I mean, if it's bigger, it needs a sewer, but it needs a sewer if it's bigger, so. But anyway, you would have to do that. I don't think that's highly desirable in any way for the neighborhood, because it would change development options in the neighborhood. But it's also very expensive, and that's why you have a certain number of units in order to do a 40B up here. So I don't think we need to go through each, I don't need to run through each part of the zoning right now. The basic differences are, the setback and the open space impact the density equation. To the extent that different setbacks or different open space make it impossible to create 40 to 44 units, then right now, the message I've been asked to convey to the planning board is that the owner and the developer are not interested in zoning that would be at that reduced level of density. That's what they're saying right now. And that's pretty much all they've asked me to say, except that they said that, you know, they would welcome some additional time, time is very tight, but additional time to discuss with everyone, all residents, but particularly the Hillside Street neighborhood residents, what kinds of options are available, and, you know, can we come up with a better proposal at this time? So I would encourage the planning board at the end of the discussion, after they hear from everyone tonight, to postpone an actual vote, if they can, until April 23rd, or whatever your next meeting is.
I guess it's September 3rd.
Okay. I have a question.
Yep.
Mike, do you want to go first?
No, no.
This may again be a question that you don't want to answer or can't answer, but I feel like it's an answer, or a question that's been circling around the project for a long time. And I think many people know the history of this project, that this land, I believe under the same ownership and developer, came forward to build three homes on this site. That was rejected, and it's sort of gone from there. So I guess something that might be helpful in moving the dialogue along would be understanding the, you've suggested that the requirement to build 44 units is really stemming from that 4%, that 10% affordability requirement. But obviously, the delta between three homes and 44 condos is a pretty big delta.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess it would be helpful for this board and for the community, particularly the neighborhood, I think, to understand why the delta is necessary in order to make this a financially and economically feasible site. So that's just maybe something that you want to bring to the conversation at some point. Because I think that's clearly that, as you've pointed out, as Eric's pointed out, that's the density's the rub. And I think some of that, we've gone from three homes, we've heard eight homes from the neighborhood, and, you know, there's been buzz about it in the press. We're hearing 44 now, we're hearing 22. There's a lot of numbers here. What's really feasible, I think, is a big question.
I think you're right. I mean, I could certainly give you a long answer, but I'd like to give you a short answer.
Sure.
And I'd like to go back before the three-lot open space development to say. I wasn't involved, but this is the history as has been explained to me. The owner had informal discussions, or tried to, with some neighbors, but didn't really make a lot of progress. He was really poised to do a 40B development, or to try to do one, when a local engineer became involved, because he was surveying the property, and suggested that this looked like a site that might be able to be used under this special bylaw the town has, this open space development bylaw. And he wanted a local developer to work with the owner, so that's how Todd Hamilton got involved. And it was a job convincing the owner to undertake the proposal for the three-lot development, because it was only three lots. There are 15 acres on this site, and even under AA zoning, you can make more than three lots out of this land. So they were going to get less profit from the land if they did the three-lot development. But the proposal was given to them on the understanding that it would be a quick approval and that everyone would support it. And it just didn't turn out that way. That's the way these things go. So they thought they could get, you know, a couple of months, get an approval, go ahead, get some money from the property, it would all be done, you know, like that. The estate or the heirs would get some money from this. And nothing has happened. So that went to an appeal, they undertook to do an A&R lot, starting to do just one lot, that's been appealed. So everything has kind of been stuck. And it doesn't, it's not just stuck. I mean, a lot of money gets spent in the course of doing appeals, developing alternative engineering plans. And so the more the money, the more time goes on and money gets spent looking at other options, the more that the owner wants to get a better return. So that's what's pushing us in the direction of higher density. But remember, higher density was contemplated before the three-lot development was ever proposed. And so it was never out of the mind of the owner, as far as I can tell. Now, the question becomes, what do you do with the property? Why not just go to single-family development? Because you have to put a road in from Ford Ranch Road, if you're not going to use the right-of-way, which was the bone of contention with the three-lot development. And there's a certain expense and difficulty associated with having to put a road in. So how many lots can you get? What will be your profit? And how good will those lots be? How marketable will they be in the Hillside Street setting? And then if you don't do that, then there's no zoning to allow anything else. So that's what we're talking about now. Should there be another alternative? Should there be zoning that would allow some form of attached residential development? Or is it just really not a good option for this neighborhood, period? We're trying to explore that. I've written, you know, one version, the residents have written another version, and it's very clear to all of us that the difference is density. What's the, why, what you're saying to me is, why can't you develop it at 20 rather than 40? I'm saying, maybe you can. It's a matter of profit. It's how much money the owner's going to make. But if you don't have zoning to do it, you can't do it. So it's not profit in the hand, but it's potential profit. But there are other options, although they're very difficult to achieve and will take a long time, and who knows when they would happen. For a developer who doesn't, can't get what he wants, if the owner feels like he can get more money from something else, he can make an immediate sale to an instant...